Is everybody ready? Ready, ready?
No. I mean, it seems to make sense.
All right. I'll call the meeting to order. You can call the roll, please.
Here.
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 Could we please rise for the pledge of the flag, please?
My pledge is to the flag, the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I'll entertain the motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
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 All right. This is a time for, this is interesting communications. If anybody would like to address council on any particular issue, please step forward, state your name and address for the record, and ask your question or make your statements.
I live at 108 Waterworks Road here in Fort Thomas. This is a plea for action by the city council, City of Fort Thomas. The subject is unsafe traffic conditions on Waterworks Road, Fort Thomas. On 9/30/16, I purchased a home, 108 Waterworks Road, Fort Thomas, Kentucky. Happily, I was moving back to the city I was born in, grew up in, the city where my maternal grandfather built a house in 1921. I immediately noticed the excessive speed and reckless drivers passing by my house at 108 Waterworks Road. I voiced my concerns with neighbors. They voiced identical concerns. A couple of years passed when I became more concerned that children crossing the street were in danger. Neighbors and my family getting in and out of their vehicles were in danger of the speed and recklessness of drivers on Waterworks Road. A neighbor and I were discussing this danger, and we agreed to approach city council of Fort Thomas to voice our concerns. We approached this council last year, 2018. The result was, there is now a marked crosswalk at Sadie Court and Waterworks Road. This effort by city council and others, however, has not remedied the situation stated above. At the new crosswalk, one must look both ways naturally, then look again multiple times to at least have a feeling they looked enough before crossing. Now before, now more students will be walking to the temporary Johnson School at Highlands High and Middle School location through that new crosswalk. Since the crosswalk was installed, four vehicles have been sideswiped. A neighbor's minivan has left rear quarter panel clipped. Another neighbor's driver's side mirror knocked off. Both are hit and run. It's still dangerous getting in and out of our cars and trying to avoid being rear-ended while signaling to park. I'm here today earlier than expected. I wanted to come here to address that point. However, last Friday, 7/12/19, at about 100 hour 25, at 12:25 a.m., completing the count of the four, my 2018 RAV4, Unit 2, Fort Thomas Accident Report, 2019-06596, with less than 10,000 miles on the odometer, and my wife's Hyundai, Unit 3, Fort Thomas Named Accident Report, were struck by a Jeep Cherokee, Unit 1, stated in the same accident report. From the report about Unit 1, estimated travel speed between 35 and 50 miles an hour. Also, in the same report, the driver of the Jeep stated he didn't realize he lost a tire from the impact and tried to hit the gas, but struck Unit 3 in the rear side, causing damage. I don't know if I said that clear enough. The impact, Unit 1 onto Unit 2, was enough to tear from Unit 1, the entire right side tire assembly, the tire, the rim, the brake caliper, and rotor assembly, all connected linkage assembly, and the strut assembly. My RAV4 has been totaled by my insurance company. The victims of these events never, are never made whole. The inconvenience for us to try to be made whole will take time and effort for my wife and me, again, purchasing a car. My wife now waiting for damage assessment. She cannot drive her car. Our insurance rates will no doubt increase. What will it take? Another incident as on West Southgate? Another child's death as on Shawnee Avenue? More vehicles being sideswiped? More panicked pedestrians and school-aged children driving to cross Waterworks Road? Please do not say that you're aware of the traffic problem on Waterworks. I know you are. I know you're aware of it. Please don't temporarily place a police cruiser, or a speed monitoring device, or another temporary device in the street, as they are only effective temporarily. The new crosswalk is ineffective. I want to be very clear with this question, very clear. What are you, city council of Fort Thomas, public servants, going to do about the speeding and reckless drivers, these dangerous traffic conditions on Waterworks Road, Fort Thomas, Kentucky? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Rob. Well, any comments or questions?
Chief Kilgore, do you have any suggestions? I saw the car today, actually, the blue RAV4. It's severe damage, especially where it's concerned car. That's amazing. I think it hit 35 to 50 there. So while we've done the temporary report, and obviously it has a part that goes through every day, people do fly around that corner, they fly down Waterworks. Do you have any suggestions with experience? What we can do, what we can add there?
All right. Well, we did a speed survey about a year ago, and I don't have it in front of me, but I remember the results. Didn't show a massive amount of speeding. I believe they have a speed of 23 to 25. We installed a crosswalk, and I noticed the reengineer that little turn there, where you turn off, put more on Waterworks. A particular accident question, I'm not sure where that speed came from. Usually, it's the driver's estimate. So it could be that guy said he thought he was going between 35 and 50, or it just could be the officer's observation from the damaged car.
The damage is severe. I saw the cars still in this corner. It's very severe damage.
You want to share pictures?
Yeah.
Pictures?
Yes.
Well, I'd just like to add to it. I'm Scott Harden. I live on the corner of Hartwig and Waterworks. I have four children, two dogs. I live there, I've been there since 2016. It's a major problem. And the reason that this guy was up to 35 miles an hour is because of the curve. They come whipping off of Memorial, and my neighbor who lives on the corner of Memorial, excuse me, Memorial and Waterworks, has, signaling to turn in her driveway, has almost been knocked out 100 times. Every time she comes home, somebody's riding her, and they cut the corner so close that when you come down to the stop sign, they're clipping the front end of you. It's constant, it's every day. I've got cameras up. If you guys want, I will bring you hours and hours and hours worth of stuff. The only problem with your speed survey, where it was, everybody that's turning on Hartwig or Sadie is knocking your stuff down. And those of us who, you know, pull up and turn in really slow, that's going to knock your average way down. There is no way to get a true average by doing that right there with the cross street. There's too much other activity. It's insane. It's a problem, and somebody's going to get hurt. I live right on the corner.
Do you have a better suggestion for a location for the unit?
You know what? I don't. And I'm going to look to you guys as professionals, but we, I understand that the average is going to be way down. A lot of our problem is generated because of coming off of Memorial Parkway. So everybody's, they're cutting off the corner and staying at 35, coming all the way up the street. Maybe some, a divider or something there where there's a stop sign, you know, in the center, that makes them go around that. I don't know what that is. Like Rob said, I'm going to, I'm going to look to you guys as the professionals and the, you know, understanding the city traffic flow and all that stuff. It's a problem. It's a big problem coming off there. I don't know if it requires a stop sign on Memorial or what. It's not, not up to me, but it's a big problem.
Most of the speed is occurring, I'm asking the question, is most of the speed occurring because of cars coming off of Memorial? Or is the speed the opposite direction, coming up Waterworks?
You know, it's honestly both ways. Most of it is, the problem, more of, the speed is both ways, but more of the problem of dangerous reckless driving is coming off Memorial. Because they, that's how they got Rob's car, is because he came flying around the corner and just took them both out. He's 150 feet from, from the corner. There's, he had to be hauling butt to take those cars out. He wedged himself between the two cars.
Do you think that bump out causes more problems than not?
Where they turned the road out?
Yeah, I mean, I've been driving that my whole life, going back and forth. And I tend to get a little bit, just get on it a little bit more when I come from Memorial on, just because you have to kind of go out and come back in, so.
Well, I don't know, because the other way, it was a little clearer shot, and they were doing it that way, too.
Yeah, it definitely slows the traffic down. The reengineering that was done, it definitely slows the traffic.
Sure. But with Southgate being speed bumps and everything else, we have people come up past us and turn left on North Fort Thomas. So they're, they're going around Southgate because of being the 20 mile an hour and having 10 speed bumps, which is great. I applaud that. But when more people are going that way, you know, I've had people flip me off, yell at me, curse at me, when I ask them to slow down. If I'm at the crosswalk, they ignore me. There was somebody yesterday, my wife and I were outside. Four or five cars went by, and he's like, "Well, I guess the crosswalk doesn't mean anything." And it's constant all day long. And, you know, crosswalk aside, it's just dangerous.
I'd like to respond, Eric, to your comment about putting something up. That works because they see it. As soon as it's gone, it's gone.
Back again.
It doesn't matter. Place a cruiser there, fine, they're going to see it, they're going to obey the law. Once it's gone, it went right back to where it was going, what was happening. And the, and the crosswalk again, I just have to reiterate, is doing nothing.
The reason I ask the question is because the chief was mentioning, he thought that the, the average speed was only 23. And then your comment was that you think it was false because of some other traffic. So my feeling is, if we could get a better reading with the stealth stat on what the actual traffic is, that might help us determine what we can do. Because obviously, something needs to be done, and I'm just trying to figure out how to get there.
The lady he mentioned, that she comes off of Memorial, tries to take a left into her driveway, they're coming so fast, they almost keep them.
Yeah.
Okay? I talked to her yesterday, Sunday, and she said, "You know what? I was just talking to my mother, wondering when the next thing's going to happen, because nothing's happened for a while." And she said, lo and behold, I look up there, and see her car smashed.
All right. I think our, part of the problem is, where our hands are kind of tied on, because of Memorial, but we can certainly look into options on, for Waterworks. And, and I think that that's, suggestions from you guys are what you would think, what you would like to see there? I mean, we, you refer to us as the experts of the traffic club, but, I mean, we're not, I'm not a road guy, so I, I wouldn't be able to come up with a solution for that. But if you guys have something you'd like to see done, if you, if you'd like to have speed humps put there, which, if, you know, the first couple of times, it sounds like they're just going to tear down into a ramp and fly into your living room, they're going to hit speed bumps going that fast, so.
Well, that question really frustrates me. Not, it's not personal, it just frustrates me, because I've heard that before. And I heard from leadership here, that we have to go through some type of documentation. We, as homeowners, have to do all that work to get speed bumps. That is completely ridiculous. I mean, really? Why am I in charge of the street and how to manage traffic? I'm a mechanical engineer. I know what it took to take that freaking rear, that front wheel off of that car. It ripped everything off. He had to be going more than 50 miles an hour. He had to be flying. It took the rim, as you can look at it close, it took the rim and folded it over. Steel is 56,000 KSI usually to take, to bend it. 56,000 force to move that, like it did. That's crazy. And for me, then I'll sit here and say, "Okay, I think you need to do this to the road," or "I think you need to do this to traffic." It's not my expertise. Google it. I'm sure there's thousands of-
Kind of the question was, what would you like to see put there?
Block it off. End the road there. I think everyone in the street would be just fine going up around 915 and coming home. Shut it down. You're not going to do that. I know you won't do that. That's what I'd do.
Rob, Eric, is there, do you know any regulations regarding how far a speed bump has to be from an intersection? Are there any social limits, do you know?
I'm not sure that there's a, I'm sure there's an engineering standard of some sort of the distance from an intersecting street without an interrupted stop sign or something along that line. I think it, it's more of an engineering design viewpoint of how that might fit, and the appropriate spacing of those, elevation of those, et cetera, so.
I mean, I, you know, one, one traffic calming thing right there, you know, the people that make that turn will get used to that pretty quickly, and, you know, go slow, much slower over that. Now, I don't, it's probably a very low percentage of people that do it, but one person, like, with your phone, does it.
Well, we know, now there's three, at least three different incidents where cars are hit right there in the last six months. A van was just hit recently, and it was a hit and run. That guy's out. The guy that lost the mirrors out.
Right.
You understand, though, what it takes to total a brand-new car. No insurance company's going to total a 2018 with less than 2,000, 10,000 miles on it, unless it's $20,000 in damage or better. So you understand that the speed, I don't think that this guy ever said he was doing 35 to 50 in order to total that car and hit a second car. He was doing that clearly.
Beyond my personal loss, I don't want to, I don't want to live on a street where some kid gets killed, okay? Because I, we walk our dog. We have to walk up to the intersection, we want to walk up Hartwig, and we got to look, 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 all the way across. Now you've got kids coming up here for Johnson School. It's going to happen.
Yeah, you know, I'll tell you what.
And it's both ways. I'm sorry to mean, it's coming both ways.
That's not, we all understand that. I mean, one of my worst days on city council is when we got a report that a child was killed on Garrison because some driver cut through, you know, to, to avoid a traffic light, and, and ran out between a parked car. I mean, these, those are awful things. We have to find a solution, though. I mean, we can't just keep, you know, so, let's try and think that, let's think about that, what the solution is, not how bad these things are. Of course, keeping in mind, now, we have had streets, and the reason that you have to have an agreement of, of the owners on the streets, because some people don't want those things. I mean, they don't. And so, you know, we, you're here, and it's important for you to bring your information here, but we really do have to take into account other people's terms. That's why we have, you know, rules on how we, we go about putting in these traffic calming devices. So let's work toward that.
Well, we have eight houses total that face that street, or either are inside streets connected to it or on that street, and three of them have had cars hit. So you tell me, who's going to, who's going to oppose that?
Is there, is there a way we can find out how many cars have been hit before and after the bump out?
I, I asked, when I came up, got the report, I think I had it with me the last five years. I didn't have the chance to look at it, because I'm chasing down insurance, trying to get another car. I mean, again, that's my job.
Yeah, I just, I just remember before and after the bump out. I mean, like I said before, when you come in around that bump out, it tightens it, it kind of, kind of funnels you into something, and you're trying to beat the car coming down Memorial the other way.
There you go.
No, but the intent was to slow you down, because people would fly around there before it's not even green.
That's what you think, that's what you think's happening, and then you come into it to finish it a little bit. I mean, it's a state route, too.
That, that design has been in place for a long period of time. And that, that engineering change was done, don't quote me, but, you know, 15 years ago, probably now.
And driving, driving attitudes have changed. We've got cell phones, we've got people's brains everywhere else. That's a huge difference.
I don't think there's any question that the geometry of it was helpful. It doesn't necessarily address all the issues that are current, and, you know, but it was, it was a, in some part.
It's hard to argue that kind of survey, you know? But as far as, like, it's a state route on Memorial Parkway, I know you have trouble with mile per hour, but slowing it down.
Yeah, the mile per hour issue is difficult. It's difficult. I understand. And we've, we've addressed that with the state on Memorial Parkway multiple times through its entirety, not just this section, even the 45 mile an hour. That's a whole different conversation. It's not our jurisdiction to do that. We can certainly work with the KDOT officials about what that might mean. But, you know, I just need to refer council back, and we can pull that out and have this conversation. We do have a policy about how we approach traffic calm conferences and what standards there are for that. And, and as Mr. Peterman mentioned, there is an issue of making sure that the residents are all, you know, kind of on board with what that all means.
Roger, may I respond to what you were saying about, I think we need to look at the greater good? That's why I brought up the kids. Some kid maybe getting hit. You said it happened on Garrison, it happened on Shawnee. I don't want to live on a street where it happened again, and I was part of trying to find a solution.
Yeah.
And the solution wasn't found.
So, Mr. Peterman, you asked what kind of ideas we had. My idea at the corner, due to, it's already been restructured and all that, it's still, we know people are just cutting the corner. You see the little traffic island with the, with the sign, the stop sign or a keep right sign or whatever, so they, they're, they can go around. Because they're probably not going to go on the left side of it for fear there might be a car. It may slow some of it down. The speed bumps go a long way to slowing people down. It just gets them thinking about it. When you go up Southgate, you can't, you can't go fast, but you also think about it. There's signage everywhere, and there's speed bumps, you know, every couple hundred feet. It does a great job. It does, it fulfills its purpose. And then all that traffic's coming our way now.
Should we refer this to Public Safety Committee, and then answer after the little, give us some alternatives in public safety, and then come up with a solution?
Or the public order?
Sir, what was it? What decision?
It's a road.
Please?
It's a, it's a road, so that would be, I don't know what, who would normally-
Either way.
Well, for, for me, thank you for your time, and sorry, everybody else, for taking so much time. But it's, again, I have four children, and I live right on the corner. It's, you know, Adam knows where I live. It's, it's a busy place. We understand all the traffic. I mean, there's 100 and something houses up Riverside and all the parkways up there. Everybody that lives back there comes past us. Everybody does. And the same people do the same stupid things every day. I can watch moms with kids in the car on their cellphone as they drive by my kids. And I'm like, "Guys, you've got kids in the car, and you're doing stupid next to my kids." So you just want to go up and shake them sometimes, just to say, "You have kids in the car, and you're doing this to my kids."
But, I mean, you make a good, and I've always felt like this, and, and maybe there is something else we can do, but I, I really do think, it's been true for me, going back several years, people are more aware of how dangerous these situations are. I think, you know, it's, it's, that's part of the process, education process. You know, an analogy could be, you know, how there's phishing on the internet, you know, that, well, people aren't aware, they do stupid things on the internet, too. Well, I don't know, maybe there's something we can do with, you know, the reports we send out, just to, you know, make it worse. Because I think it is, repeat people that turn there all the time. You're not going to go there randomly, usually to turn, maybe to the 915 or something like that.
It's the same cars I see every day, and the same people do the same speed every day.
And how dangerous that is. Yeah, like you're saying, with children.
They're coming home from work, they're oblivious to what's going on, they take the same way every day, they're looking at their phone, just thinking about getting home, and here we are.
Like I said, I was conscious of it since the first time we came in here last year, okay? I was conscious of it before, I'm conscious of it now, and I've been watching it quite a bit. It's probably 50% of the people. It's not some low number. I think everybody gets it. I think I've said enough. I appreciate your time as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a quick question for Chief Counsel. Does, when you did-
I agree with you. I mean, but I mean, all in the city.
There's several, there's several data points in there. I just remember that one, because I reviewed that before recently, two weeks got rid of it, because there was one about Waterworks. I didn't remember that one sticking out. It gives us data on average speed, 80 bit percentile, which we've talked about several times. But it doesn't tell you how many people were going over 35 miles an hour. No, they'll give us 600 percentage of cars tearing over, 10 miles per hour or more over the speed limit. It's just from reading it, none of those jump down.
Yeah, not specific.
Yeah, and as we talked about before, enforcement will always be one part of the puzzle, and we'll always do right here. Keep that system of perception, education is another leg, and then the final leg is engineering enhancements, whichever way you look at it. But when we get into speed bumps and rejoining the redway, the geometry of the original engineering, it's something we could do, and we all know that Memorial's a state route, but we could do a speed survey along Memorial as it comes into Waterworks. But regardless of those results, it's, it's a state highway, that would just give us information to, to capable of, which we've already done multiple times, so.
Okay.
Should we have a Public Safety Committee meeting tomorrow?
We have a Public Works meeting set for a couple of weeks, and that is a road.
Bring it up at that, then. And anybody who's not on Public Works obviously can attend the meeting, so let's just do it that way and do it at the Public Works meeting. It's scheduled two, next week, two weeks?
It's in two weeks.
Okay.
So, I mean, but we can all, we can add it to it already, it's our-
Maybe we can gather some more information before that meeting.
Have the engineers look at it.
Excellent. Okay. Thanks. Would anyone else like to address council?
Neil Lyschak, 43, Woodland Place. I just had a question regarding the later discussion and the executive session, and if later is a better time for this question, that's, you know, just let me know. But I was wondering if you could explain the purpose of the executive session, and also, are you going to be discussing funding of the Central Business District project at all? You know, we have some concerns that if there is any city funding going towards this project, that it should be a public discussion and, and something that we can have all of the information and be aware of, so.
Yes, and all that will be public once we come back in from executive session. All, all of those details we've made public. Right now, we're still in a draft form, and council hasn't had an opportunity to see all aspects of that, so that's why we go into executive session, because it is talking about financial details with the developer. Once we come out of that meeting, hopefully, we'll have a consensus and come back to the meeting, and then all that will be disclosed, so you'll hear all of it.
And you disclose it, and then do you vote on it after that disclosure, or how does that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And is there a chance to say anything from the public at that point, or do we?
I would, that's up to the pleasure of Mayor. It's up to me, sure.
Okay.
I mean, once the information is shared, yes. If there's new information out there, shall we give it?
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else like to address council? I do have a letter that I was asked to read into the record. Brent Cooper, President of the Chamber, Northern Kentucky Chamber of Commerce, wanted to be here to read the letter, but he is at a chamber event in California. City of Fort Thomas, Dear Fort Thomas City Council, as representatives of the Northern Kentucky Chamber of Commerce, we are writing to express our support for the proposed redevelopment project in Fort Thomas Central Business District. The partnership between Rick Grywee, North American Properties, and CIPSY Klein is a powerful one. Investment dollars like this have been the driving force behind many other projects in our region. We feel the city has a unique opportunity to create positive change. Moreover, we feel the risk associated with stalling development in the community could be a detriment to attracting other investors into our community. We encourage you to work with North American Properties to help make this project a reality.[1744.66] It is our hope that the Rye Weet team finds Northern Kentucky to be an inviting place to work and that they are willing to engage in additional transformative projects like this in other cities and towns in our region. Signed, Dan J. Cahill, incoming Chair, Northern Kentucky Chamber. Anything else? Okay, now we will move ahead to reports of officers. Fire Department Monthly Report, Chief Bailey.
Director Mayor Hoss, I'm Mr. Counsel, Mr. Dill. Uh, I realize that I may need to add to the monthly report, but we'd be happy to give any questions to my guests regarding the car problem.
All right, um, any questions for the chief? I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, you can proceed.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
Mr. Blatt?
Hi. All right, Police Department Monthly Report, Chief Gobert.
Thank you, Mayor, I just had a couple things to report on. Uh, we had July four a couple weeks ago, as you all know, that's a very long day in which Public Works, the police and fire all work together, and I just, everything went well and cooperated well, and the day went smoothly as far as I could tell, so we're happy to pull off another successful on July four. Um, we have two, actually three retirements coming up this summer. Lieutenant Rich Whitford and Officer Doug Bryant will be retiring on the last day of July. Officer Tom Carter will be retiring on the last day of August. So, with those retirements coming, we will have two promotions in August, um, one to replace Lieutenant Whitford and another, uh, when the sergeant is up, so one will be promoted to replace him. Also, we have moved forward with a hiring process, um, for Laddo's. We completed those interviews last week with the Public Safety Committee, and we will be several candidates and pick two. Uh, as long as their background investigations continue the way they're going, they'll be hired on August first of this year, so we were happy to get, uh, Laddo hires in, and I appreciate the Public Safety Committee's help on that. Finally, you've probably heard we talked before about this year being our re-accreditation process. Um, that final inspection will occur this week on Friday the nineteenth. So, we have over one hundred and eighty standards that we have to meet to stay accredited. In addition to that, we're going to come inspect our building, our cars, our uniforms, our evidence room, everything that you can think of will be inspected by an outside agent. So, I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we pass, as long as we do, it will be our twenty-fifth year as a state accredited agency, and we're happy to continue that process, so. Several people here have helped us out over the past year, Jan got to read every single one of our policies, and I know that was everything for her. Several, several subcommittees helped out as well, and I appreciate everyone's help, and hopefully Friday goes smooth.
So too.
That's all, but we have to answer your questions about the Police Department or the Monthly Report.
Any questions for the chief? Motion?
You can proceed.
Second, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
Mr. Blatt?
Hi. All right, City Administrator's Report, Mr. Dill.
Okay, um, I'll first pick up on, uh, following up the chief with, um, included in your packet, you received a copy of the agreement with the School District regarding the SRO. Um, it is our intention to move forward with that agreement for another year, just in, informing council of, of how that would work. You saw a copy of the agreement. Very satisfied, and we've reported in the past the effort and result of having an SRO officer assigned to all of our schools. The agreement that I referenced is with the Independent School District. Um, we also worked the SRO officer within the parochial schools, um, so we're excited about offering that again next year, and Officer Zach Roffler, Roffler, will be assigned to that position again this year. Couple of other updates, uh, what we refer to, for lack of a better term, the Shelter Three Project, uh, which is in Tower Park, which would be the reconstruction of the area where Shelter Three exists, um, opposite the VA, behind the VA, includes the basketball courts and other upgrades in there. Um, just, uh, for reference for council, we are in the bid process, um, that project has been designed. The bid that will be put on the street in the next week or so, um, involves the construction of the shelter itself. As you recall, a number of the other amenities will be done subsequent to that, that will be contracted. For example, the asphalt will be placed into our street bid program in the spring, um, some of the other work will be performed by Public Works crews, but this item is kind of a standalone bid item, so you'll see that at your August meeting in terms of our, our results from bids. The next item is the Route Eight status, um, and, and, you know, I, I made some reference to this in our last meeting. The issue with Route Eight is not improving. Uh, I know that's not a surprise to anybody, the condition is very poor. Um, the city is sitting at the table with all the other stakeholders, uh, that have interest in Route Eight, as we know Route Eight, and it's been reclassified, um, excuse me, but the area within Fort Thomas is still closed. Officially, it's considered to be temporarily closed. However, the discussions are continuing on the long-term viability of having that as a through route, what that might mean to the stakeholders. We have three individual residents of Fort Thomas that own, um, homes on that street, and of course, the Aqua Ramp Marine, uh, Marina is also a, an active, um, property owner down there as well. The other stakeholders include the Water District, Duke Energy, Cincinnati Waterworks has their main intake, um, facility on the Kentucky side that fronts off of Route Eight. So, all those members, um, are at the table and will continue conversation. Uh, it's not an easy problem, it's not something that you can throw money at and fix at this point. Um, it's pretty critical, I mean, so I'll keep council abreast of where that leads and how that might affect our residents, so, um, you know, we're, the, the best thing to re, to report is that everybody's aware of that and they're all working together, and that's kind of where we are with, with our meeting schedule. Uh, the only, only other note, and it's obvious at this point, is Kentucky Four Forty-Five is closed, which is River Road, similar conditions, although, um, they can be addressed, and they are addressing them this week with the closure.
Oh, good.
So, that is all I had to report unless anybody had other questions for me.
Is the October rip off of the viableness?
Well, I can tell you that, um, and this is, this is of record, um, they did file suit against the Department of Transportation to try to gain access. Uh, they're concerned about the, you know, the viability of continuing their business when they only have limited access, um, and, and so that is something that played out through the court system, but it's, it, you know, you, you're really not in a position to compel them to spend the kind of money that would result in, in opening the road at this point. Uh, they were not successful with that, but they, it is a real concern for them, and obviously, the impact beyond, you know, what's today's condition, their long-term viability is functioning. So, all those decisions will be in the future.
Okay. All right, uh, we're down to reports of committee, it's a report from Law, Labor, and License Committee.
I can provide that report. Today before council, the Law, Labor, License Committee met to discuss, uh, proposed golf cart ordinance. As you may have heard several weeks ago, a member, Jeff Beasley, has a particular interest in kind of reviewing, um, the laws of golf carts on city roads in Fort Thomas. Current KRS, according to the statute, provide for certain criteria to assume to have an ordinance that would allow us to have golf carts on our city streets. Uh, so today's meeting was really kind of discussed a framework. We have several questions about safety, um, on the golf carts, do we require seatbelts? Yes, according to the statute. Do we require lights? Yes, it's actually a permitted system. So, this will be inspected annually by the city, be permitted annually by the city. Uh, we still have several questions regarding age, number of riders committed to a golf cart. Um, so we expect a draft ordinance, I had a estimate over the next couple of months. At that time, we'll review the draft ordinance and have further discussion on actually passing to a lot of golf carts in the city.
Great, thank you. All right, any unfinished business? New business, consideration of Duke Energy easement for Alexander Circle.
Council entertained a similar request, uh, I want to say last month or the month before. Uh, this involves the Alexander Circle development, the redevelopment of the homes. Um, this particular easement is situated, um, as it, uh, on Plights Avenue, as it traverses behind the backstop, and they're requesting easement within the park property that would allow them to pick up the gas line behind the mess hall and run it into the subject property, um, essentially following that road base that's there that goes, um, behind the backstop. It is a, uh, dig and bore, so it's not an open trench cut request, but it would be a permanent easement. Staff recommends approval of the requested easement. It actually, currently, it runs through the middle of the ball field. So, um, they'll be abandoning that line with the replacement line, um, as I described it, so. If anybody has any questions, it, it's a permanent easement that would allow the gas line location.
So, we can easement back through the ball field once, then...
That would be abandoned, it was an easement by prescription because of how long it's been there, and quite frankly, it was built, when the Armory Post was built, it was probably then given to do after.
There is a official action required?
Yes, it would be, uh, you would entertain a motion to authorize a mayor to sign with...
So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
Mr. Blatt?
Hi. All right, consideration of development agreement, oh, that's, we're going to post, put that down to...
No, we actually have one other agenda.
Oh, there's another, oh, okay.
The, um, sorry.
I took it off. The school resource?
No. Oh, the, um, bids for the...
Vernon Lane.
Vernon Lane.
Vernon Lane bids.
Yeah.
It is, we do have that.
Fairly small.
Yeah, there it is, sidewalk and curb bids. Can't turn it sideways.
I know.
Yeah, and then the whole screen goes. Did you find it? The very bottom one?
Mm-hmm. I'm looking for the number. Oh, and there we go. Where that's supposed to be, there it is. Okay, the, um, I, I reported at the last council meeting regarding the need to solicit bids for work on Vernon Lane, um, for the, part of our, our capital program, our street resurfacing program, um, and at the time I indicated the need was based off of, a little bit, with our weather conditions that we've experienced this year. Um, secondarily, we have a program that ironically, or not by design, I should say, involves doing work behind, uh, the subdivision on Woodville, and at Vernon Lane, and at Ohio and Ridgeway, all which have proximity to our schools, um, and, and so they're a little bit time sensitive. It's our intention to pull this piece out and have a separate contractor do the work for curb replacement and sidewalk replacement, and a small section of, uh, storm sewer extension within the limits of the Vernon Lane portion of this project. Uh, we did solicit bids, we had two different, um, bidders, one was JPS Construction, and their bid was eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and twenty-five, and TMS Construction, which was eighty-two thousand, nine hundred. Um, we are recommending to accept the low bid, we've worked with both of these contractors, we're both quality contractors, um, and we are recommending at staff level to award bid to TMS for eighty-two thousand, nine hundred to perform that work.
I will entertain the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
Mr. Blatt?
Hi. All right. So, we will pass on this and go to Finance Committee Report on Disbursements.
Report of disbursements, June fifteenth through July tenth, two thousand and nineteen. General fund, three hundred and eighty-three, eighty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars. Power plant fund, four hundred and sixty-four dollars, seventy-three cents. Public Works KDOT fund, nine thousand, five hundred and forty-four dollars and twelve cents. Reacquiring debt service fund, one thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and eighty-eight cents. CDB revitalization, three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-four, ninety-eight cents. Waste fees, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents. Relicent farm pension fund, one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-five dollars and ninety-two cents. Total, four hundred and ninety-one thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and three cents. We, the undersigned members of the Finance Committee, recommend that warrants number five eight seven one, for six out of three six, be approved and the treasurer be authorized to issue checks for their payment. Mr. Peterman, chairperson, Mr. Beasley, member, Mr. Brenner, member.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
Mr. Blatt?
Hi. Okay, we have one ordinance, um, ordinance thirteen, two thousand and nineteen, the waste fee renewal.
This is a summary of ordinance number eighteen, two thousand and nineteen, an ordinance establishing and fixing an amount of service charges for the collection and removal of solid waste in curbside residential recycling for the city of Fort Thomas, Campbell County, Kentucky, from September first, two thousand and nineteen, through August thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. This ordinance sets forth the charges for the collection of solid waste and residential recycling, which charges shall be levied against property owners.
Well, it's a first reading, we don't have to take any action on that. All right, um, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn session, someone would like to mic that.
I'll move, we enter into the executive session in accordance with KRS Section sixty-one hundred and zero, for discussion between us and a representative of business entity and discussions concerning a specific proposal, the book of discussions for jeopardized city deciding, retention, and expansion of our breathing of this.
Okay, so we're, we are now going to go into executive sessions to discuss the draft policy agreement that we have with the developer, and then we will come right back in here to open session and share that information with you all, and have a vote on it. Oh, yes, is there a second to go into?
Second.
Do we need to vote it? Roll, roll call vote.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Brenner?
Hi.
Mr. Beasley?
Hi.
Mr. Peterman?
Hi.
Mr. Blatt?
Thank you. Thank you all for being patient, waiting, we appreciate it. Uh, we're back into the regular session now, and, uh, gone over the details of development agreement, and I'm going to ask Ron to kind of give a description, so folks can understand what we have going on here.
Excuse me, can you guys turn up the volume because we can't hear you downstairs? We have a hard...
Yeah, these are on. Sorry, can you hear now?
Yeah.
Can you hear me now? Okay, good. All right, I'm going to ask Ron to go over some of the, the basics of the development agreement. Um, take it away.
Okay, um, and it is being projected on the screen, can you hear me through the microphone?
Is it on?
Is that better? Can you hear me now?
Here.
Hello?
That one's better.
That one's better?
Yeah.
Maybe we have a, a failing battery. Okay, I'll try to be loud anyway, so, um, depicted on the screen is a copy of the development agreement as proposed. Um, I'm just going to highlight it, obviously, it, it becomes a public document at this point, anybody can obtain a copy of that moving forward. Um, the development agreement typically is, is outlining what is included, um, in the relationship between where the city would be involved in a project and what commitments a developer may have, um, to the community and to the city. Um, so I'll kind of walk through the highlighted, um, topic areas, um, so I'm on, the first part is, is setting the, uh, some of the standards for the operation, a lot of whereas is in there, um, that talks about the actual development and what it is, and the parcels that are involved, um, and, and, and description of, of what the project entails.
that talks about the actual development and what it is, and the parcels that are involved, and description of what the project entails. On page number two, the heading is Developer Commitments to the City. These items include the requirement of the developer to construct the project in compliance with the approved plans, and specifically, the approvals of the Planning Commission in May, and the Design Review, Design Review Board in May, and any subsequent approvals by city boards or commissions. So, they're obligated to construct it within that compliance window. Further, that they will seek additional input from the city and staff and Design Review Board, and that they will accept those as long as they don't materially alter the financial cost to the developer. So, that's part of the review process moving forward. The developer is further committed to construct the project with at least eighteen units of a particular description as far as the ratios, with two parking spaces and visitor parking described in the project. Other items include a commitment to commence construction in this calendar year with an intention of completion within the second quarter of two thousand twenty-one. That they will have best efforts to secure tenants that would allow the construction of building number two, which is the structure that's independent of the condominium units, and that they will work toward a tenant that would include a sit-down restaurant in that building. That they would prepare the site that would include a public parking lot, and they would create the base necessary to support that public parking lot. And then, in addition, they would do any required landscaping on the site according to the specifications. The second item is issuance of industrial revenue bonds. This refers to financing on the project. Then, in the agreement, would be that there is an issuance, the city agrees, to the issuance of the industrial bonds, that's a process that would take place subsequent to any approval of this agreement. There's a, there's a specific process to follow, the city would be making a commitment to issue those bonds under the terms of the state of Kentucky. It's understood that those bonds would be no obligation to the city for repayment, that they would be done through the Kentucky State Local Debt Officer requirements, and any cost related to those would be paid by the developer. Commitments from the city to the developer, and that's subsection number three, would be that the city would purchase approximately point eight acres of the property for a public parking lot, and described in the exhibit, attached exhibit, with a perpetual easement for the ground detention vault below the parking lot, and the city would agree to purchase that at a price of one million, six hundred thousand, it would be paid to the developer by the close of this year. The city would agree to install and construct a parking lot on that subject property, including the curbs, asphalt, and light fixtures, built to site specifications, that would be done for the targeted completion date in early two thousand twenty-one. The city would do maintenance on that parking lot and own that parking lot, and maintain it for long-term viability. The city would post-construction, reconstruct any streetscape along Fort Thomas Highland Avenue and Woodland Place that may be affected by the development. The city would notify the developer within a reasonable time if they are not satisfying item one G above. And, well, let me pick that up, one G above in reference to...
The tenants.
Yes, the tenants for the property, if the city felt like there were not reasonable effort on the part of the developer to attain that requirement. The developer is required to pursue that. If they have not found tenants and commenced by January thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one, the city would have the right and obligation to purchase that property currently located at the former bank building for the purchase price of the developer of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. The city would also, on page four, agree to participate in costs with the developer for any relocation of the utility poles, it's the intention is to put below grade any utility services into the project site. The developer, and we spent a lot of time working with residents on Woodland, there are specific requirements under item number four, on page four, that have been itemized, that talk about a lot of the issues related to zoning regulations, to screening, to the number of parking spaces, speaks to the issues of trash removal, installation of the landscaping, and details of the curb cut on Woodland Place, and these are all included within the development agreement specific to their construction adjacent to Woodland Place. The next item is City Operational Commitments. It creates a relationship between the city and the developer regarding some of the issues of construction related to closure of sidewalks, necessity of maintaining traffic, where the workers are permitted to park within the city on public streets and on public parking lots, and again, maintaining traffic. Developer has made on item six, operational commitments, that talks about the requirements to meet storm detention, to upgrade utilities to the site, to create any environmental remediation that would be necessary to construct the project. Operating procedures, and again, these are included in this development agreement by intention. They've made, I don't wanna say concession, but they've made agreement on exactly when their hours of operation would be beyond what is restricted by local ordinance as far as noise ordinances. So, those are spelled out in here, site safety, site access, limiting those functions to specific areas and specific times during the construction process. The remainder of the document talks about dispute resolution, if there's any dispute between what's written, and a number of other legal, technical items with regard to provisions of separation, what constitutes the entire agreement. And finally, the agreement is subject to the final approval of the developer's plan by the City Planning Commission and Design Review Board. They are required to submit stage two. They are intending by this document to make a supplemental to the Planning Commission to address items that have been discussed with residents on Woodlands, so that any requirement of a subsequent approval by Planning Commission would have to occur. They would be required to meet the approval of the Kentucky State Local Debt Officer for the issuance of the bonds that I referenced. And lastly, that they would have to secure acceptable financing to the project and notify the city of their attaining of that. Beyond that, Mayor, I can talk a little bit about the bond issuance, and try to provide best explanation. The IRB, and I know the developers here as well, and they could speak to this issue on, as it relates to their part of the project. The IRB process creates revenue into a project where a bond is issued and paid back over time through investment. The payment in lieu of taxes, or the pilot that's referenced, creates the additional income from increased tax revenue to be shared among the tax entities. Obviously, the city is one, the county is one, the school district is one. So, these are a negotiated amount that retire the debt on the bond and provide for taxation, or payment in lieu of taxation, that is paid to the city through an agreed amount. Calculating numbers on that, there's a significant amount of assumptions that have to be made, because we don't know future tax rates, we don't know future valuations per se. But the project is, and they are committed by this agreement, to create the project as described in the approved plans. It is anticipated that it would be a twenty million dollar tax base. So, numbers are run based off of that to provide the potential tax revenue and create the pilot that would be anticipated from that. The city's pilot over the life or term of the bond issuance in a thirty-year would have a return of approximately, based on these assumptions, of about one point nine million dollars. The city also provided a potential projected payroll increase of approximately eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars over what is currently being created as a revenue stream from those same properties and those same tax bases. So, that essentially is the overview of the development agreement. Certainly, if council has any questions, we will try to answer them.
The exciting thing about this project is that with the pilot payment, it covers the cost that we, we will end up with a parking lot, a public parking lot, for the residents and the citizens of Fort Thomas, or, and people from out of town to come in and use the parking. So, it's a, part of the development agreement is working with the developer to create the IRB that gives them what they need to do their building, and the return from the IRB covers the cost for the parking for us, plus we get additional revenue after that. So, it's kind of a win-win scenario all the way down the line. Anybody on council, have any particular questions or comments? So, I know that that's been some of the questions people had about, are we putting tax dollars into it? The straight answer to that is, yes, tax dollars are going in, but tax dollars are coming back out, and we're getting more dollars out than we're putting in. So, it's a win-win. We're basically, with just the basis of the industrial revenue bond, are going to get a minimum of basically the same amount of money we're getting from it now. And then, as the increases come in, those increases will be more than what we put into the project to cover it. And we have several different ways to do that. We could borrow the money so there's literally no outlay to the city at all, because it could be financed, and then the payments coming in from the IRB would actually pay for those, make those payments for the cities, so we basically have a free parking lot. But we could actually be more cost-effective and make more money by purchasing it outright, and then taking those funds and using it in other situations. So, the financing part of it can be done several different ways. But bottom line is, the cost of the public parking gets covered by the project over the term of the, of the thirty-year period for the bonds, which is, it's a fun thing, so. Excited about the project, that we couldn't ask for better developers, the team that's together. Rick Riwe and North American Properties are absolutely top-notch, they've done wonderful projects. North Americans all over the place, and Rick's done great projects all over this area, and really looking forward to the potential of the transformational change that that's gonna do to the center of our town. So, I'm excited about it. Anybody have any particular, specific questions on what we presented tonight? All this will, you all can have, get requests for the copy of the development agreement, that kind of thing, so.
Sure.
Hi, I'm Tom Morrison from ninety-six Hawthorne. Before you went into special session, there was some comment that it's gonna be a vote tonight. Is that accurate, or are we gonna get time to digest this before it goes for a vote?
No, we will go ahead and vote tonight. The development agreement is just between the city and the developer, and there's several other steps that occur prior to, the IRB hasn't been done yet, there's some other issues with it. So, the development agreement is just what Ron described, it's just the basics of the relationship between the city and the developer, there's nothing really...
But every time you vote on something and prove it, prove it, it sends the project farther towards inevitability. And, by the way, just to be very clear, I'm actually supportive of the project. I know some people aren't, some people are. I just think that from a public input perspective, I've not seen this document before, I don't understand what you're voting on, and to get a five-minute overview and then have us have a few minutes up at the podium seems kind of rushed.
To put it into public record, that you, so you do have access to it with a vote to approve it, so it goes in public record. It's, it's one of those things, there's a lot of steps involved for, because right now, it's not officially a development agreement until we approve it to be a development agreement. It doesn't become public record until it's been approved by us to go into as an agreement.
When we get to the IRBs, I believe that requires an ordinance, which will have the two different readings that will allow details about the IRB.
So, this would only go in effect if the funding is subsequently agreed, so people can give input prior to the funding on the whole of this concept.
Yeah, it's, this starts the process to say, we, the city and the developer intend to work together to continue with this project, yes. But the details of that still, there's still stage two with planning and zoning, there's still the IRB situation that would have to come to council for ordinance reading and two different readings. So, those, that's just part of the process. This is just a basic agreement that happens anytime there's a major development in the city, between the city and the developer, just kinda just stayed out, this, as Ron described. You know, who's responsible for what, what are their intentions?
Yeah, and I actually came tonight to ask about the funding question. I got somewhat of a feel for it with your description. But that, by approving this tonight, you have not approved that funding yet, you are still in discussion, that's the thing you...
No, I think, I think the approval would commit the city to create that agreement, to create that funding.
So, again, then, I'm confused as to why we would see just a few minutes of this and then have you guys vote on it, when the public input, I mean, to digest this in this session is kind of, I think ridiculous to have that short of a period to have the public think it through and give their input. Just, I'm just being full on this.
And procedurally, I understand what you're saying. This is a lengthy process, this council's, you know, charged with getting to this point, and it's really a decision of council to do that, or whether they do it or don't do it. You know, the particulars of the project come together through the course of time, and this is what the development agreement is, as Member Beazel indicated.
So, you're required to vote on it tonight, or you're just choosing to vote on it tonight?
It's not required to vote on it tonight, no.
So, it'd be my suggestion, you give this a percolate until the next meeting, so people can give input. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's John Rans, and my wife and I have resided fifty-two Woodland Place here for forty-six years. My concern is, in lieu of the financing here, what is gonna be the impact on the taxpayers of the whole entire city?
None.
That's, I was gathering that from what you said, but I wanted to make sure I understood it.
Well...
Our tax rates are not gonna go up. I don't like the idea of financing something that's gonna potentially have a negative impact on our neighborhood.
Let me take a shot at trying to explain that, so, this is a new investment, right? New investment, if it's done, will generate new taxes. And those new taxes that are generated by this investment will pay for this parking lot. So, yeah, we have to put, the city is going to put the cash in that will be generated by this investment, and that will result in a parking, you know, a public parking lot. If there's no development, then there's no new revenue, and, you know, everything stays the same. But with this new development going ahead and the new taxes it generates, that's the source of payment to get that parking lot done.
Yeah, gathered that from the comments that you were making. I just wanna know if, as taxpayers in this community, if we're gonna get stuck with the bill?
No. No, but you asked, our taxes are not gonna go up, I can't guarantee that.
Well, I understand how that works, inflation...
I knew that's not what you meant, but, yeah.
Well, what I meant was, tax, you know...
It won't impact the IRB.
No.
That probably is the best way to state it, special levy.
Right, no, there will be nothing like that. And based on the numbers we have here today, and which are estimates, you know, they are estimates, that we will get more money in than, than we're, than will cost the city to do this. So, it's still gonna be a win, that's why it's a win-win for the developer, for the city, for the residents, to have new commercial space and some nice residential space in our center of town.
Well, I guess I'm gonna think like Ronald Reagan, we talked to Mikhail Gorbachev, trust but verify.
Yes, there you go.
Let's hope we're not biting a pig in the butt. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can you clarify, where is the parking lot located that the city's purchasing? Or where's the easement gonna be?
It's the entire parking lot.
The one behind the development? Okay, because there was some discussion in the planning committee about like across the street or other areas because of the not having enough size, I wasn't sure if we were talking...
No, it's the, it's the parking, the approximate forty space parking that's located...
Right on the property there.
Exactly, with the access off of North Fort Thomas Avenue.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Can you set up an access screen?
Yeah, it was in...
There's an exhibit, right?
Oh.
There's an exhibit.
It was in the packet, yeah.
So, then, is that...
Yeah.
Is that being purchased?
Yeah.
Who owns that park, who owns that now?
Well, it's under multiple ownership, but as the development comes together, they intend to purchase all of those properties related within the development area. So, it would be a purchase of that portion of the property to have the parking area within that limits.
All right.
Tiffany Huber, twenty-six Hawthorne. I was here, I think, a month ago, and I was talking about transparency. And I'm not, again, for or against, doesn't matter. I think what matters is that this is an example of something where your people come, your citizens come to the council, and they see what you have on the agenda, and they believe that they have the opportunity to have input, but we really don't have input, or that's the view, or the perception. And I'm not, you know, saying anything negative about anybody up here. I know you guys have worked hard to make this central business district development work, and you've made concessions. I think the thing I'm concerned about is that people don't understand the process, and we can... and we continue to not understand the process, and it looks, again, like you you have a something, we don't get the agenda till Friday, and you guys are gone at four, four thirty, that again, I realize you have a workday that ends. And then we see the agenda, and we don't know if we need to be here or not, because we don't know what's going to be discussed. And then we come, and then it's, again, executive session, and I realize that you guys are tasked with doing certain things.
Right.
But I think your people are saying, we want to be more involved.
Okay, I I appreciate it, and you've you've said this before, let me give you an answer.
I know, but I'm just saying, this is an exact example.
Well, let me explain to you. First of all, we are the elected officials of the city, and it's our job.
I got that.
And I think I've discussed before, maybe not with you, but in general, there's, we are in a public meeting right now. This is not a public hearing. There's a difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. The public hearing that the planning commission had, where everybody came and had an opportunity to speak about the development in general.
Yes.
Was the place where people have an opportunity to say, yeah, I either like it or I don't like it, this is what I, this is details.
It's important details.
But.
Yes, yes, yes. But to say people don't care about what you just threw up there, people do care about that, they do.
No, I I understand that, but we can't operate a city with every citizen making a decision on everything we do.
I agree with that, but I do think that there's an opportunity that, when I said last time.
Yes, there is. When we have ordinances, which I was describing earlier, when we get to the IRB, that's an ordinance, and that requires two readings. So if you came to a meeting and you saw the agenda, you would hear the reading the first the first week, then it will be two weeks later, a month later, when we meet.
So at each of those readings, I have the opportunity to provide a vote?
You have the opportunity to say, wait a minute, I don't understand this, what's going on with it? This is detailed, this development agreement is a general, a general agreement between the development and the city on, we intend to move forward. But it is not something that requires two readings, it's not something that has details that 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 citizens need to be worried about because it covers all the things that were in the planning and zoning, things that are going to be coming up in the stage two development part. So, and I do understand that you do want more information, but at some point, we have to do our jobs and move ahead with what we're doing.
And I would love to have some of these kinds of examples put on the website so that people, we're trying to learn here, we're trying to learn what the process is.
Yeah.
And understand how we give our input in a positive way, and how we can help make change.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other specific questions about this plan tonight? All right, thank you. Call the question? We have a development agreement, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Mayor, can I explain my vote?
Sure.
Can everyone hear me? So first, I want to say that I believe this development is going to be a key part of the city. I think we're fortunate to have, we have properties and rent behind the development. However, personally, I am uncomfortable with some of the commitments still in the city, and for that reason, I'm going to vote no tonight. But I do hope it's successful in the future, and if it gets passed tonight, I will be very supportive of the project in the future, as I vote tonight.
Mayor, I'd like to, as well.
Sure.
So when I'm looking at this issue, I'm looking at what the purpose of this process has been. When we did the comprehensive plan update, the CBD was something that we prioritized, the redevelopment of that. We have the best partners that you could ever ask for in Rick Riwei and North American Properties. And the goal of getting this to a point where it it creates something that can synergize other parts of the city is is one that that we should all embrace. But the bottom line is that we can't get to that point with the best partners available without subsidizing this. And I understand the IRB, I do. But again, the sticking point for me has always been cutting a check, a direct check, even with that assumption that it's going to come back to us. I just think for us as fiduciaries for the city, we can't take a risk like this and cut a check that big, even with those assumptions that seem like they're going to occur and that they're formalities at this point. But I just, I can't feel comfortable doing that right now. Again, I'm going to be supportive of this project, too, and I hope it goes, and I hope you guys make a lot of money. But but tonight, I'm voting no.
Mr. Weefal?
Aye. Well, I'm going to vote yes, but I'm going to explain my vote then. This happens to be the type of work I do professionally, so I work with cities and counties around the state, you know, putting together development projects like this. And, you know, apparently, even the people that voted no agree that, you know, this, that central business district does need, I mean, we do need to respond to citizen input that we have to emphasize, the central business district, that needs to be a focus. There are other areas, too. U.S. twenty seven corridor is one that I think we really need to, you know, focus on, and and there are several other projects, anyway, the riverfront and so on. And and Mark, you made the point that we have a top quality developer and the chance to meet separately with some folks at, from North American Properties, and they are excited not only about Fort Thomas, but the whole northern Kentucky, or let's say downtown Cincinnati South, as far as, you know, future development potential and and what this area can turn into. In fact, they now own Newport on the Levee and are going to make a big investment in that. So it's, I I mean, I I take it as a compliment that a high quality developer sees this area as as one with, you know, so much upside potential. We already know it's a great place, but it can be even better, right? And I I will, though, have to disagree about the subsidy and that 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 we're subsidizing this project directly. I think that's the, not not the lens I would view this through. And in fact, I think we are meeting our fiduciary obligation of the city. This project's going to generate new revenue. I mean, there's no question about that, it's a twenty million dollar project, there will be new revenue generated by that. The problem is, the new revenue that the city's going to get, we don't get all in the first year. It's it's like buying a house, you know? You might pay two hundred thousand dollars for a house, but you don't have two hundred thousand dollars out of your first year's worth of paychecks to pay for that. You've got to fund that over time, or you would never have that house. And this is what we're doing with this. We're going to get this new revenue over time. To a very good question, do we have to put city money in this directly? Well, it'd be like, you know, like the mortgage example, yes, but we are getting the revenue over time from the project itself, you know, to pay this back. So I think we will have met our fiduciary obligation to the city because the project itself will generate the revenue needed to pay for this public parking that is another big thing that was identified as far as central business redevelopment. So given the type of developers we have, and the fact that we can do this by just, the financial term is monetizing our future revenue, my thought is, if we don't do this, then I'm going to be long gone before that area ever changes from what it is right now, which was made clear to us in the visioning process, is not what the people in in this city want. And so that's why I vote yes.
Mr. Weefal?
I almost changed my mind. That was solid. As everybody else has explained a little bit here, some of them have, I'm more in line with Councilman Cameron over there, and Collier. My vote's going to be a no, but it's not for, I don't know how to put it, it's an amazing project, we couldn't beat it, we have the guys involved, Dan Gorman putting this together actually, and making this thing happen, and it's, the city needs it, but I just feel uncomfortable about the amount of money upfront, even though we say we're going to get it in the back end, as they're all risks I'm not willing to take with city dollars at this point. It's an amazing project, though, I believe it, I do truly believe it will do well. And and this has been, this group of people that I've worked with has been amazing the past six months. You can hear what I've had to listen to in the meetings with Roger and David and Mark and Ken. It's, some of it went over my head, it took a little bit to understand some of it, but the truth of the matter is, this is a, this is a pretty well-rounded group of people who care about the city and have strong opinions, but work together to try to make the best decisions for everyone. And Debbie Baccato, they're helping work on this project, and Sam, I mean, it's been, it's been a pretty awesome experience, and it's, this is really a great development for the city, I just have a little problem with the numbers right now, so I vote as no.
All right. So we have a tie vote, so I get to break the tie. Guess what I'm going to do? Actually, this development is going to be transformational for this city, and when we got final numbers, final, when we, the latest numbers we received where it's not going to be an outlay of tax dollars, that we're going to get our money back and then some. And as I said earlier, and it's very difficult to explain all the processes around an IRB, but we could literally borrow the money and not have to pay anything and let the revenue pay for it. So it isn't putting out the money. It's going to be cheaper for us to pay for it upfront. So I think it's our fiduciary responsibility to do it the best way for the city to save tax dollars. So that's what I think, that's the way I think we'll do it. We may not do it that way, but I think it's a great development. This has been something that's, it's been difficult for the city to attract developers here in the past, and I know Dan Gorman's in the back there, and if it wasn't for Dan and his passion for helping improve the city, we would never be here today. And Dan, I thank you, I want to thank you publicly for everything you've done to help make this happen, and so my vote is yes. All right.
Move to adjourn.
We are, is there a second?
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.